Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think it is time for us to begin. I'd like to open the call order, the commission meeting for the public hearing on Issaquah Highlands Retail, Issaquah Highlands Medical Office Administrative Site Development Permit, and Issaquah Highlands Self-Storage Administrative Site Development Permit. Before we get too far into this, we have a couple, some business, official business to conduct, and that's approving minutes from our March 19 meeting and our minutes from our March 20, 2019 meeting. So I would entertain motions on that.
Mr. Chair, move approve the minutes of the March 19, 2019 meeting?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the March 19 meetings. Any discussion? All those in favors of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, how about the minutes of March 20?
Mr. Chair, move approve the minutes of March 20, 2019 meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on those corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes of March 20, 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
So all opposed? All right, motion's carried. So my understanding, process-wise, we're at the point where we're going to have rebuttal by the city first, and then applicant will be able to do that. So Mr. Lell will...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city has three rebuttal witnesses that we'd like to call tonight. The first is Jeanne Lynn. Ms. Lynn has not yet been sworn.
Do you solemnly swear that as you are about to give them this cause, you do the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
I do.
Ms. Lynn, could you please identify yourself for the record?
My name is Jeanne Lynn.
And what is your current title and position?
I'm a senior planner with the city of Issaquah.
How long have you held that position?
Almost two years.
Are you an attorney?
I am not.
Have you received legal training?
I have not.
Before this proceeding involving IHIFC, have you had experience with Washington's vested rights doctrine?
I have not.
Who at the city of Issaquah do you directly report to?
Lucy Sloman.
And how long have you been employed by the city of Issaquah?
Almost two years.
And where did you work before you assumed your position with the city?
In California.
Are you the city of Issaquah planner who was assigned to the preliminary plat application filed by IHIFC Shelter Holdings for its project site in the Issaquah Highlands?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the IHIFC preliminary plat application that was filed in August of 2017?
I am.
Did IHIFC's August 2017 plat application depict building footprints?
Not to my recollection.
Did it depict buildings or structures at all?
No.
To your recollection, did any of the materials submitted by IHIFC in conjunction with its August 2017 plat application depict buildings? I'd like to call your attention to a document that was previously introduced into the record for this proceeding, actually, two documents, Exhibits C-11 and C-14. And my colleague will hand copies of those to you now. For your reference, Ms. Lynn, I believe this has variously been described as a, quote, "supplement," end quote, to IHIFC's August 2017 plat application. Are you familiar with these documents?
I am.
Could you please identify these documents?
C-11 is a record, looks like a record, of files that were uploaded as part of this application. C-14 is a sheet labeled Preliminary Engineering Overview Site Plan that was uploaded as part of this application in December 2017.
And could you please describe what you mean by "uploaded"?
So, in order to submit documents to the city, the city uses a service called mybuildingpermit.com. And so to, as part of that submittal, the applicant would upload files to mybuildingpermit.com, and then those files would then get distributed to various city staff for review.
Is mybuildingpermit.com specific to the city of Issaquah, or is it a service that is utilized by other municipalities as well?
I believe it is a service utilized by other municipalities as well.
And could you please describe in as much detail as you'd like how the mybuildingpermit.com system operates for purposes of project submittals?
As I mentioned, the applicant would submit project documents, plans, and any other associated documents associated with the application, upload it to mybuildingpermit.com. When it comes in, our permit technicians at our permit center would take a look at that and then route it to the appropriate city staff for review.
Does an applicant require some type of formal city permission or approval before uploading a document to mybuildingpermit.com?
No, they don't. They just need an account.
And they don't, just to clarify, does an applicant need to consult with the city at all, or warn the city, or otherwise alert the city that a particular submittal will be uploaded?
No, that would not, that is not required.
And what is your personal role in relation to submittals that are filed by project applicants using the mybuildingpermit.com portal?
I get routed plans and application materials for my review.
Turning back to the December 2017 supplement that you were handed, did you request IHIFC to submit that document or to upload it through mybuildingpermit.com?
I did not.
Did you, or to your knowledge, any other city of Issaquah staff member know that IHIFC was intending to submit that document before it was uploaded?
Not to my knowledge.
To your knowledge, did IHIFC discuss the supplement with you or other staff members before it was uploaded?
Not to my recollection.
Could you please describe how you became aware of that document?
I believe the engineer emailed it to me and then let me know that he had already submitted it through mybuildingpermit.com.
Do you recall the identity of that engineer?
Sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now.
Let me rephrase the question. Was it an engineer retained by IHIFC as the project applicant, or was it a city engineering consultant or staff member?
It was an engineer retained by the applicant.
When this document was uploaded in December of 2017, how was it processed by you and the city?
I don't know that it was processed...
What happened once it was uploaded, when you became aware of it and received your awareness from the engineer that that document had been uploaded?
I think I took a quick look at it.
And could you describe the nature of your review?
It was very cursory. I think I was looking for changes, any significant changes from the original submittal.
Okay. I'm going to now hand you another document that was previously introduced into the record for this proceeding and identified as Exhibit C-10. Are you familiar with this document?
I am.
Could you please identify this document?
This is the cover sheet to the plan set that was submitted in August 2017.
Okay. Could you please refer to the note in the middle of the page that is circled with, I believe, blue ink, I don't know if that's mechanical or handwritten, that it's Note 7, beginning with "Final Plat and Building Permits Are Vested," quote unquote?
Yes.
Could you please read that note aloud?
I'll try. The print's quite small. "Final plat and building permits are vested to the development standards under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. The allowable development shown on this plat has been fully mitigated for the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement."
Thank you. Could I then refer your attention to the planning comment, which appears in its own box or window immediately to the right of Note 7, beginning with the words, "This statement needs," quote unquote? And could you please read that aloud?
Okay. "This statement needs to be revised or deleted as some of the information is not true and/or unclear. For example, it is not possible to vest building permits that have not been submitted/issued. Additionally, the use of the term 'fully mitigated,' in quotes, is not true if mitigation is intended to include road/frontage and utility improvements."
Who drafted that comment?
I did.
Why did you draft that comment and insert it on the face of this document?
Because I was trying to draw attention to the fact that this statement is not accurate.
Thank you. I'd like to refer your reference back to the December 2017 supplement and hand you another document entitled Notice of Application, and this was also previously introduced into the record as Exhibit S-1.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with this document, Ms. Lynn?
I am.
And what's the date on that document?
December 27, 2017.
Could you please identify that document and why it was prepared by the city?
The notice of application is a required public notice to be sent out by the city when we receive a certain land use applications.
Did you prepare this document?
I did.
Was the content of this notice of application dated December 27, 2017, limited just to IHIFC's preliminary plat application, or did it include and reference other applications?
The notice of application package that we sent out included a total of three different projects, so three different notices of applications.
And do you recall what the other notices of application referenced in that document were, what projects they referred to?
Yes. It was Polygon's Westridge Single Family North Preliminary Plat and Polygon's Westridge Townhomes North Site Development Permit.
Are all of those proposed projects located in the same general area?
They are.
And is that area the Issaquah Highlands?
It is.
Were all of those projects' applications submitted under the auspices of the 1996 Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement?
I believe so.
Was this the first notice of application that the city issued in relation to IHIFC's preliminary plat application?
Yes, it is.
And if IHIFC's preliminary plat application was originally submitted in August of 2017, why did you wait until December 27 of 2017 to issue a notice of application?
I believe there were a couple of reasons for that. One, we, given the proximity of the other two projects, we wanted to bundle the public notices so that the public has a bigger-picture idea of what's going on in that area. I was also a fairly new planner with the city at that time and learning the city's processing requirement, timelines and requirements. And then finally, when I first, at that time, we had a fairly high number of complex applications that I was working on. So those factors caused some delay in issuing the notice of application.
Did IHIFC's December 2017 supplemental submittal to its plat application have any bearing on the timing of your issuance of the notice of application?
No, it did not.
I'd like to call your attention to Page 2 of the December 27 Notice of Application that you prepared. Could you describe what is depicted on that page?
This is the Preliminary Engineering Overview Site Plan that was the supplemental submittal uploaded by the applicant in December 2017.
Okay, so just for purposes of clarification, Page 2 of the notice of application in describing or depicting the site plan, that was borrowed from the applicant's December 2017 submittal and not from the applicant's original August 2017 plat application?
That is correct, yes.
Why did you use the December 2017 supplemental submittal rather than IHIFC's original August 2017 preliminary plat application for purposes of Page 2 of the notice of application?
My recollection is I chose this sheet mainly because it presented information in a way that's most easily understandable by the general public.
Did you consult with Director Niven or Ms. Sloman before issuing the notice of decision?
I did not.
Did you consult with the city attorney before issuing that notice of application?
I did not.
To your understanding, Ms. Lynn, is a notice of application intended to serve as an appealable decision under the city of Issaquah's regulations?
That is not my understanding.
Was this notice of application intended to serve as an appealable decision?
It is not my understanding that a notice of application is intending to serve as an appealable decision.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lynn, I'm Pat Schneider, and I'm representing the applicant, IHIFC. I do have some follow-up questions for you, and I apologize, given the structure of this room, that I may not always be looking at you when I'm asking questions, so forgive me for that. As I understood your testimony, you said you weren't familiar with Washington's vested rights doctrine when you came to Issaquah. Is that fair?
That is fair, yes.
Okay. And so when you made the comment in that box on the first page of the plat application saying it needs to be revised or deleted, was that your opinion about vested rights, or were you channeling someone else's opinion?
I believe I was relying on my experience in making that statement.
Okay, and so what is inaccurate in this statement?
So what is inaccurate in the statement is it is not possible for, it is not possible to vest building permits that have not been submitted or issued. And I believe the statement states that the building permits are vested.
Oh, it's really too small for my eyes to read, but can you quote the language that refers to building permits that you're saying should be deleted?
Yes. So the note on the plan set states that "final plat and building permits are vested to the development standards under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement." That is the first sentence of Note 7.
Okay, and doesn't the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement provide for vesting of both building permit and plat applications?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, but you just said you thought that was inaccurate, and isn't it simply saying what vesting is provided for in the development agreement?
Sorry, I don't know what the development agreement vests. My understanding is that if you have not submitted an permit application, you can't vest it.
Well, to the extent that this language was intended to reflect what's in the development agreement, it's fair to say then you don't have an opinion of whether it's accurate or not. Is that fair?
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that? I didn't...
I understood the language you just read, which I can't read because of the small type, but I understood the language that you just read simply to paraphrase what is provided for in the development agreement. And my understanding is you don't know what's provided for in terms of vesting in the development agreement. Is that accurate?
That's generally accurate, I think.
Okay. And is there anything else in that box that you believe is inaccurate?
Are you talking about the box where I provided the comment, or are you talking about the clouding?
The clouding that you said had to be deleted or revised.
Oh, yes. I believe there was something about mitigation. Oh, the allowable development, sorry, this is a continuation of Note 7 on the plans. It says, "The allowable development shown on this plat has been fully mitigated per the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement." And I believe I asked for that statement to be clarified.
And why did you think that was an inaccurate statement or one that wasn't clear?
Because I didn't understand what it meant.
Okay. But I think you told us you didn't understand what the development agreement says about vesting. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
So if the development agreement that includes mitigation is something that one vests to, you weren't aware of that at the time?
So it wasn't clear to me what they meant by "mitigated."
And do you have any further conversations with the applicant about your note?
I don't recall.
So Mr. Lell has asked you a number of questions about the December submittal as opposed to the August 1 submittal. Does it matter? In your understanding, why does it matter whether something was submitted in December as opposed to on August 1?
I'm sorry, I don't think I understand the question.
Well, I'm trying to understand whether you believe there's any difference in terms of meaningfulness or effect between a December submittal and an August submittal.
In terms of the date that it was submitted or the content?
Well, in terms of whether it has any effect on what you did as the planner who processed the application.
No, I believe the December submittal had no impact on my processing of the application.
And why not?
It, I mean, we were still processing the application largely based on the August submittal in terms of providing comments.
Well, you testified that you used the December site plan because it provided more useful information to the public.
That is correct.
So didn't it also provide more useful information to the city?
Marginally.
And is the December submittal part of the application that you, for want of a better word, been processing since then?
To be honest, I haven't really done a whole lot of processing, other than provide comments back in March.
Okay, and why is that? If you were the planner assigned to the project, what happened between August and Why did it take so long to submit comments?
I think it was the nature of this project, I think there were, in terms of its complexity and the issues that are involved.
And what was the complexity about the plat application that you just referred to?
There were several technical complexities with respect to addressing traffic and circulation design.
And can you be more specific what were, again, these technical complexities?
The technical complexity had to do with, the plat is proposing to build out new streets for which we had to determine what the appropriate design for these new streets would be.
And who is responsible for determining the appropriate design?
I believe that it is a effort between the applicant and the city. The applicant proposes a design that they feel is appropriate and submits it for the city's review, and then we work out what design elements are appropriate.
So were you involved in that process?
I was.
And so, again, what was complicated that took so long? Was the city waiting on the applicant to submit something, or was the city simply not processing the information that it received in 2017?
The, it was the complexity of what we were reviewing that took a long time to provide comments to the applicant. It was the technical complexity.
Okay, I'd like to draw your attention, Ms. Lynn, to Exhibit S-47. It should be in one of the folders here, but I have a page from it I can simply hand you. Can you identify that page, S-47, for us?
I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, could you indicate what specific page of the exhibit that was? Multi-page exhibit.
Oh.
It doesn't have a page number on it. It's the one that says Project Info 1129 AM for left-hand corner.
Thank you.
First page.
Are these your comments on this exhibit?
These are not my comments, these are my notes.
Okay, your, excuse me, your notes. You wrote them.
Yes, I did.
And what did you say there in the highlighted language in the middle of the page?
Under general notes, I said, "Should be a fairly simple plat."
Is there anything on that page that talks about complexity that would slow the processing for six months before the city provided comments to my client?
Possibly. I see "frontage improvements?" with a question mark.
What did you mean by that?
I don't recall. I think it's, we need to figure out... Just on this sheet, no, I do not see anything else.
Are you aware, Ms. Lynn, that there are timelines for processing in the development agreement?
I am aware.
Okay, was there any effort made in the processing of IHIFC's High Street Collection Division application to comply with those timelines?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, did the city, to your knowledge, make any effort to comply with the timelines in the development agreement for processing the plat application?
We strive to.
What did the city do to strive to comply with those timelines?
We reviewed the project and, to the best of our abilities, we tried to get back to the applicant with our comments.
Well, I think you testified in response to Mr. Lell's questions, and these are my notes, I wrote, you said, "I don't know that it was processed," and then you said, "I took a quick look at it," very cursory. What, after you took that cursory, quick look, what, if anything, did you do until March?
With respect to the December supplemental submittal?
With respect to the plat application, including the August and December submittals?
Oh, my recollection was that there were a series of meetings between myself, our engineer, and our traffic engineer to try to work out the frontage improvements and road design.
And who do you remember being present at these meetings?
Maybe different people at different meetings, but overall, myself, do you want names, or?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay, so myself, the city's project engineer, which is Doug Schlep, the city's traffic engineer, which is Fay Shoffey, and then I've also had conversations with my supervisor, Lucy Sloman.
And how many meetings between August and March with these folks do you specifically recall having?
I don't specifically recall the number.
More than two?
Yes.
And were any communications given to the applicant as a result of any of these meetings before March?
I don't recall.
Were the March comments, what were they about?
They were about the plat application, specifically comments on the traffic study, as well as the plan set.
Were there, were those comments based on anything in the code?
Yes, I believe so.
And what road standards were applied to the streets provided or proposed in the plat?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, do, yeah, ask me to repeat anything you don't understand. Did the city apply existing specific standards to the plat application, or did it create standards at these meetings that were specific to this project?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to respectfully object. This line of questioning is exceeding the scope of my direct questioning of Ms. Lynn and her answers by a fair margin.
Well, that same comment could have been made about, you know, much, this is a two-way street, much of the questions that were asked of the prior witnesses, and it's all about the processing of the application, which is the subject of Ms. Lynn's testimony. So to circumscribe, you know, the processing of the application to only a certain time period, I don't think is appropriate, when we're talking about a plat application that to this day has not received a recommendation from the department.
Okay, how does your questioning get us to that point, to your better understanding of the processing?
Well, I'm trying to, I think this all goes back to Ms. Lynn's comment that she wasn't sure this was processed. I don't have any evidence of processing, other than a March submittal and something a few months ago. So we have huge periods of time where, as far as I can tell, nothing was happening, and I'm trying to explore if something was happening that hasn't been communicated to us.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe that Mr. Schneider's most recent line of questioning actually concerned the standards that the city was purportedly using to evaluate the project at that time, and that goes beyond the issue of processing.
I agree with that. It doesn't seem to be consistent with just trying to understand the process that was going on.
Well, it's related in the sense that our client believes that the comments that were made were not based on anything in the code, and that the standards were ad hoc standards that were created out of whole cloth, and I'm trying to pin down whether that's one of the reasons for the delay here. But I can focus a little bit more specifically on the, on why it's taken so long.
Would you please?
Thank you. So, Ms. Lynn, again, let's leap ahead to the present. Other than those March comments, what comments has the city provided to my client on the plat application?
Since the March comments, I believe we were waiting for the applicant to submit a revised submittal.
And when did the applicant, did the applicant respond shortly after the March comments from the city requesting clarification, in part because, as I was just saying, they didn't understand the standards that the city was applying?
Same objection, Mr. Chairman. This is veering pretty far wide of the mark as it relates to the original line of questioning under a direct examination.
I understand the need to try to understand the processing that was going on, so with that focus in mind, would you continue?
So again, the question was, didn't my client respond pretty quickly, asking to understand what the city's comments were based on in terms of applicable standards?
My recollection was, yes, there were some emails, correspondence back and forth, trying to get clarification.
And how many months did it take the city to respond to that request for clarification?
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
And was there anything active going on that you're aware of to process the application after Ms. Heim submitted those requests for clarification?
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean by anything active?
Well, I'm trying to understand what you have personal knowledge of in terms of what was done. That's all I'm asking, is what, if anything, did you do, or did you witness being done to respond to the request for clarification?
I believe I drafted a response to portions of the clarification to which I had some knowledge, and then I forwarded that to my supervisor.
And do you know when you participated in drafting part of the response?
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
Do you know why the response to clarification submitted in April wasn't responded to until December?
I do not know why.
You talked about the fact that the notice of application that was given for the plat in December was in fact combined with a notice of two other projects by Polygon in the same area. Correct?
That is correct.
And what has happened to those two other projects that were noticed at the same time?
I'm afraid I'm not the project manager for either of those projects, so I can't speak to their current status.
Do you know who the project manager was?
Yes, I believe one of the projects is my colleague Valerie Porter, who is the project manager, and then the other project, I believe the project manager is Lucy Sloman.
And you know which one Ms. Sloman was the project manager for, the other two?
It was for the single-family preliminary plat.
And do you know when that preliminary plat was approved?
I do not.
And do you know which procedures it was reviewed and approved under?
I do not.
Are you still the project manager for the High Street Collection William &amp; Mary plat?
I believe my supervisor, Lucy Sloman, is taking the lead on this project.
And when did Ms. Sloman take the lead?
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
Was it weeks ago, months ago?
Probably earlier this year.
Earlier this year?
Yes.
So does that mean you have had no personal involvement since early this year?
Except for tonight.
Okay, and when the city submitted comments, clarifying comments, back to my client in December, did you have any involvement after that date?
No, I don't recall having any involvement afterwards.
So, Ms. Lynn, you testified in response to Mr. Lell that when you sent the notice of application, you didn't consult with Ms. Sloman, or Mr. Niven, or the city attorney before doing so. Would you normally have done any of those things, consulted with the city attorney, for example, before sending out a notice of application?
Generally, no.
When the uploading happened in December, what materials, were other materials uploaded in addition to those that you described in your testimony tonight?
I believe there were a few sheets, so in addition to the preliminary engineering overview site plan, I believe there was a more technical sheet that showed proposed lot lines.
And were you also involved in, back in the period between August and September, in the site development permit applications that my client was working on?
August and September. Are you referring to August and September of 2018?
This would have been 2017.
2017?
During the same period of time, in the months between the August plat submittal and the December plat submittal?
I believe I was involved with the collaboration and the pre-applications for those applications.
And was the, what's your understanding of the relationship between the site plan submitted in December and those site development permit applications? For example, did the building footprints in the December submittal correspond to the proposed buildings in the site development permit applications?
I did not review for that level of consistency.
What was your involvement then in the site development permit applications?
So it was the collaboration and pre-application, applications that I was involved in. The site development permit application, which is a formal land use application, I was not involved in that process.
Okay, so you've had no involvement in the SDP applications?
After the SDP applications were submitted, I have no, I've had no involvement.
And who has been the lead planner on those?
I believe that would be Lucy Sloman.
Is, was it typical for you to be involved in the pre-application process and then not be the planner once the application is submitted?
I'm fairly new to the city at that time. I don't know what is typical versus what is not.
Okay, I think we're done. I understand that Ms. Sloman has taken over the processing of the application, but before that happened, did you, as the lead planner for the plat application, consider the December submittal to be part of the application?
To be honest, I didn't really give the December submittal much thought with respect to whether or not it was part of the application.
Well, can you explain that a little bit? Why didn't you give it any thought? Is that because you weren't processing the application, or, I mean, it was there, did you draw a distinction between it and the other's application materials, or not?
I don't recall what I was thinking at that time, I'm sorry.
Has the December submittal ever been part of the, have you given it any thought since it was submitted, in any, for any reason?
Other than in preparation for tonight, no, I have not given it any thought.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lynn, that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions on redirect, if I have your permission to do so.
Please do.
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Lynn, is it common in your experience and observation for plat applicants to state or contend on the face of their plat applications that they have some type of vested rights?
It is not in my experience, but my experience processing a plat application in Washington is limited to nonexistent prior to this application.
Thank you. I'd like to refer you back to exhibit S-47. These were the, I think you referred to them as your general notes on May 26, 2017. Do you have a copy of that document?
I'll find it currently. I'm sorry, I think it was taken back by council.
Do you have it in front of you now?
I'm sorry?
Do you have it in front of you now?
I do.
Thank you. At the time this note was drafted by you, had IHIFC submitted its entire plat application?
They have not.
Okay. The date of this document, your notes, was May 26, 2017. So, as I understand it, this was at least a few months before the August 2017 date upon which IHIFC submitted its preliminary plat application. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Was the August 2017 plat application submittal a larger packet of documents and a more complex packet of documents?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. No further questions.
Do you have further rebuttal witnesses?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to next call Mr. Niven, but I will just alert the commission that my questioning of him will be presumably longer than my questioning for Ms. Lynn, and it might be appropriate to take a break if that would be the preference of the, of the commission. But I'm happy to continue if you prefer.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you. I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to next call Mr. Niven, but I will just alert the commission that my questioning of him will be presumably longer than my questioning for Ms. Lynn, and it might be appropriate to take a break if that would be the preference of the, of the commission. But I'm happy to continue if you prefer.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city's next rebuttal witness is to recall Mr. Niven. Mr. Niven, would you please acknowledge that you continue to be under oath from your original testimony?
I am.
And have you been present throughout these proceedings?
I have been.
And have you listened to the testimony of all the other speakers and witnesses in this proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you. Very briefly, just to return to the testimony that Ms. Lynn gave, did you hear that testimony this evening?
I did.
Did you listen to her answer in response to the question of whether it was common for plat applicants to state on their plat applications that they are vested in some manner or another?
I heard that line of questioning and answer, yes.
In your experience, Mr. Niven, what is the answer to that question? Is that a common occurrence?
That's not a common occurrence. I think there are times when, on the face of a plat, there may be some, a testament to either mitigations or improvements constructed or things of that sort. I think that's what drew Ms. Lynn to question that comment because of the absoluteness of its kind of statement and intent, and because she was unaware of the truthfulness of that. She brought it into question, which was the right decision for a plan reviewer to do, because if that stays on the plat and it is not true, that could cause a problem later.
Thank you. And to rehash, I believe, your testimony from your original appearance before this body, how many years of planning do you personally have under your belt?
Sadly, let's see, I have 30-plus years.
And approximately how many plat applications have you reviewed during that time period?
Quite a few. Almost all of my tenure in city planning has been in current planning. For eight years, I worked for the City of Phoenix and reviewed significant number of subdivision plats. Then I worked for the City of Auburn, Washington, reviewed plats there as well, and then, as part of the city's major development review team, reviewed almost all of the plats. There were a few that had been approved prior to my coming to Issaquah, but I set my eyes on most of the plats for Issaquah Highlands and Talis.
And I just handed you the same copy of Exhibit C-10, I'm sorry, it's a very small print, but the same copy that I had handed Ms. Lynn, and I would refer your attention to the same note that I questioned her about, which is Note Number 7. Can you read that? Or is it?
Can I take the fifth light, Mr. Snyder? I'm, I could tell you that on a good day, okay, I can deal with this much light. So...
You read that aloud?
I'll try. No, I can't. I can't do it. Sorry.
Did you hear Ms. Lynn, when she read that Note Number 7 aloud in the record?
I did listen to that.
And in your experience and observation in reviewing the number of plats you have as a planner, have you ever seen or personally observed language like that in a plat application?
It is not typical, under the general notes, on a subdivision plat, to render a statement about vesting and mitigations, in my opinion.
Thank you. With respect to interpreting the 1996 Development Agreement that is at issue in these proceedings, how many combined years have you and Ms. Sloman had in construing and/or administering that document?
So, mine's looking a little haggard at this point. I've had this binder since 1998, and Lucy was working for the city prior to my coming to the city. So, between the two of us, we have about 43 years, give or take, in administering the Issaquah Highlands two- and three-party agreements.
Are you aware of any other individual that has more experience than yourself in construing and interpreting and administering that document?
Absolutely not.
Did you listen to Ms. Heim's testimony regarding the reported legal effect of the build-out period under the 1996 Development Agreement in relation to vesting?
I did.
Do you agree with her conclusions or her testimony on that point?
I don't agree with it, no.
Could you expound on that, please?
So, this is, I think, the primary place where the applicant and the city have a difference of opinion on the interpretation of this contract. The city believes that this was a contract executed for a certain period of time, and once that termination hit, that the allowances that were given, the developer and the property owner, under this contract would expire.
Thank you. Did you hear Ms. Heim and Mr. Young testify regarding the allegedly inconsistent statements or position that the city made or took in relation to the vested or non-vested status of IHIFC's various project applications?
Could you repeat that, please? Sorry.
Did you hear Ms. Heim and Mr. Young testify to the effect that the city staff had expressed over the relevant period inconsistent positions regarding vesting and specifically the vested status of their projects?
I did hear that, yes.
Okay. Are you a land use attorney?
I am not a land use attorney.
In your personal and professional experience, Mr. Niven, is vesting a common discussion topic between city staff members and permit applicants?
It is not. This is only the second time in my professional career that vesting has been a subject matter.
Was your use of the term "vesting" during the relevant period here always consistent with the legal meaning of that term, as you now understand it?
What I would say is the, the use of the term "vesting," as the city used it as it relates to this Development Agreement, is not exactly consistent with state law and how it's defined in the vesting doctrine.
In variously referring to IHIFC's project applications as being vested, what did you mean by that term?
So, they were, when they were, when complete applications were received by the city, and we said they were vested to the Development Agreement, my intent with that was it was vested to the Development Agreement, to the contract, and the terms of this document, which has now expired.
Okay, so what did that vested status then mean to you in the way that you were intending to mean?
That meant that there was particular provisions within the Development Agreement which did not allow the city to change the rules unless there was public safety issue or as it related to stormwater. We actually had the ability to do that unilaterally. Otherwise, amendments to this were considered either major or minor. Minor amendments would be something worked out between the master developer and the city. Major amendments, city, as in city staff, major amendments had to go through the city council. And so, vested, for me, meant that the terms in this agreement and the standards in this agreement would govern, that was the predictability that was given to the master developer through the execution of this agreement, for the term of this agreement, and there was certainty by property owners that they could develop under the terms of this agreement as long as this agreement was effective.
And under your understanding of that term, again, and the effect of vesting, as you understood it in relation to the agreement, what would happen when the agreement was finally terminated?
My understanding is that vesting then became subject to city code, which is why, as part of the replacement regulations, we were suggesting the incorporation of vesting language to leave that, to make that outcome more predictable and less subject to interpretation.
Okay. I'm going to have my colleague hand you a copy of Exhibit C-3.
I can probably find it. Is it under the 3 tab? Let's get that. Awesome. Okay?
I believe you discussed this document before, but could you please identify it for the record again?
This was an email exchange. It ends, let's see where it starts. It starts as an email from Ms. Heim to myself dated November 21, and it ends with an email from me to Ms. Heim, CCing Mr. Young, Mr. Malaney, and Ms. Sloman. It's titled "Vesting," and that final response was November 22, 2017.
And could you read that response, your final response to Ms. Heim?
Yes, it was yes.
And that was in response to what question of hers?
So, her question, so what she states... So, her question, so what she states is, "Thanks, Keith. We have not received any requests for additional information. I'm assuming that you mean that the applications are complete and vested to the Development Agreement, as stated in the email below and as we discussed in our meeting with you today. Please confirm."
What did you mean by the word "yes"?
My intent for the word "yes" was her question about, "Are we vested to the Development Agreement?" And my answer was yes.
Okay. And could I have you then turn to Exhibit C4?
C4.
You've also discussed this variously before, but I want to emphasize a particular point. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, this is a continuation of the last exhibit. So, it unfolds from my response to Ms. Heim on November 22nd to an email from Lucy Sloman to me and then a response email from me to her.
Could you read her email to you?
Sure. Her email to me sent that same day says, "They aren't vested unless the council agrees to the vesting language. I'm confused."
Do you agree with Ms. Sloman's statement?
Yes.
Okay, and the vesting language, the council would potentially approve, what was that in reference to?
That was the vesting language that was part of the replacement regulations.
And how did you respond to Ms. Sloman?
I responded that same day. They are vested at this moment under the Development Agreement. If the council removes the proposed vesting language, they will lose their vested status.
Was IHIFC courtesy copied or otherwise forwarded a copy of that response from you?
No.
Did you follow up with IHIFC to clarify your statement or your intent?
I don't think so.
Can you explain why you didn't follow up?
Well, I thought they asked a very simple question, which I provided a very simple answer. I felt like if they didn't understand my answer, they should have asked for clarification on what my intent was.
Thank you. Could you then turn to Exhibit C30 already in the record?
Okay.
And could you please describe and identify this document?
Yes. This document is a memorandum from myself and Ms. Sloman to the city council. It's dated 12 December 2017. And it's titled "End of DA's or Development Agreements: Vesting and FAR."
And what was the substance of this document, this memorandum?
This, well, the substance and the purpose. So, this memorandum was a document that was trying to help the city council understand what issues were remaining with this very complex topic of closing out two decade-long development agreements. And the two issues that were still being discussed heartily at committee was vesting and the provision of a minimum floor area ratio on the remaining properties.
When was this document made publicly available?
It's dated 12 December 2017. I assume it was made public on that day.
Do you know if IHIFC received a copy of this document?
I do not know if they received a copy of this document. This document would have been most likely part of a council packet, which was available to the public. They were following along on the process. I assume that they received a copy, but I don't know that for sure.
Could you please describe the referenced Scenario 1 in this document and its relation to Shelter or IHIFC's projects and the vested or non-vested status of them? I'll rephrase the question.
Yeah, so there's two parts to Scenario 1. There's the vesting part and there's the FAR part.
The vesting part is what I'm curious about.
So, the vesting part, I believe what this is referring to is if the council were to accept the initially proposed vesting language by the administration, which would have vested Shelter's applications due to them having complete applications already submitted prior to the adoption of the replacement regulations.
Did IHIFC say or do anything that indicated that they knew that the city council was considering various vesting options for the replacement regulations?
My recollection is yes. They not only testified at... Well, testified is the wrong word. Provided public comment at city council, land and shore committee meetings. But they also provided a written letter to the council on the vesting provision. And I also believe, based on testimony we heard through these proceedings, that they met with certain council members to talk through vesting with them.
And approximately, what was the timeframe for those actions or discussions?
I believe those were kind of November, December, and then into the first quarter of 2018.
Then I would ask you to turn to Exhibit C44.
Okay.
And specifically, the meeting notes prepared by Ms. Heim in relation to the March 21st, 2017 meeting. This was a C44. This was the bundle of Tia Heim's handwritten or typed notes.
You said March?
Yes, March 21st, 2017.
February? Oh, I mean 16. Sorry. Sweet. Okay. Yes, sir.
Do you recall this meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Could you look at the second bullet point on the first page, beginning with, "City indicated that..."
Okay.
And read that aloud for me, the length of that bullet point?
Yes. "City indicated that they would support a plat to create the lots and that this would be the simplest path. Keith acknowledged that a plat would vest for five years and then five years from the final plat date and added that we could get vested for another three by filing a site development plan after the final plat."
What did you base your statement... First of all, is that an accurate recollection of what you said at that meeting?
I believe so.
What was your basis for stating that IHIFC could obtain vesting for five years? I believe it referenced the preliminary plat and then five years for the final plat. Where did you obtain that information or that reference?
You know, I'm not prepared to answer that. I don't recall.
Do you recall where the three-year reference came from?
So, the three years is in city code and basically says that, you know, an approved land use permit is basically... is valid for three years.
I want to call your attention to the term that you just used. The reference, I believe, you just said was that an approved permit for site development would, in your words, vest the applicant for three years. Is that what you stated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you hear the testimony of Ms. Heim and Mr. Young concerning the meetings that occurred between city staff and Polygon and/or Shelter between 2013 and 2015?
Yes.
Do you specifically recall the testimony concerning the landowner's suggestion or proposal for an extension of the term of the 1996 Development Agreement?
Yes.
Can you describe in your own words how this proposal came about and how it was addressed?
Sure. So, my recollection of the way this story started was Polygon Northwest... Shelter Holdings didn't exist at that time, to my knowledge. Polygon Northwest purchased the property from Microsoft and approached the city. And at the time, I was not the Development Services Director. I was just the Economic Development Director. Approached the city and asked for an extension on the Development Agreement. And my recollection of that conversation was that I told Gary and Derek Strate that the city would likely not support an extension of the Development Agreement because it was nearing 20 years old and had 20-year-old development standards and that the council had already heard that those standards were probably not something that we would support today.
I'm sorry, Mr. Niven. Just to clarify, your response or your statement back to them was based on their specific inquiry to you or their question?
Yes.
And the Gary that you're referring to, that was Mr. Young?
Thank you, yes. It was Mr. Young. And Mr. Strate from Polygon Northwest.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Please continue.
And so, Mr. Young and Mr. Strate had requested an extension of the Highlands Development Agreement. They basically indicated that they did not think they could build out that property in such a short period and needed more time to get applicants and plans and tenants for buildings together. And my suggestion to them was that I didn't think the council would support an extension on a Development Agreement that had pretty much run its course and that likely their best course of action would be to pursue a new Development Agreement with the city.
And how was your suggestion regarding a new Development Agreement, that proposal, received by Mr. Young and Mr. Strate?
I can give you my impression. My impression was I thought we were working very collaboratively towards that outcome. I believe that Mr. Young and Mr. Strate and at a certain point, Mr. Evans, joined the group. And there was, there seemed to be a willingness to work towards that as an outcome. My recollection was Polygon Northwest. I don't know if they had actually transitioned to Izaqua Highlands Investment Fund at this point or not. They, we talked about if there was going to be a new Development Agreement, that the city policy was that that was a negotiated contract, which needed to provide benefits to both parties. And, you know, as we talked about that a little bit further, Mr. Young and Mr. Strate kind of understood that there was going to need to be something given by them to the city or to the public if they were going to be able to get a Development Agreement with terms similar to what was in the Highlands Agreement. Their initial offer was a park. And at the time, the general perception from the city council was that Izaqua Highlands had more parks per capita than the rest of the city. And so, I believe I told Mr. Young and Mr. Strate that I didn't think that a park was going to get them to the goal line.
And to clarify your testimony, Mr. Niven, I believe that you said that Mr. Young or and/or Mr. Strate had indicated that, as of this point in time, there simply wasn't enough opportunity or time before the scheduled termination of the Development Agreement to pursue their development plans? Is that an accurate statement?
To build out, to completely build out the 1.2 million square feet of entitlement they had purchased from Microsoft.
And approximately what timeframe were these discussions occurring?
These would have been fourth quarter 2014, maybe? First quarter 2015, somewhere in... Excuse me, in that ballpark.
So, and the build-out period under the Development Agreement expired when or was scheduled to expire when?
September 2017.
This was at least two years and possibly more time before that expiration period?
I believe so.
Did you hear the testimony by Ms. Heim and Mr. Young regarding the meeting that occurred, I believe, on September 9th of 2013, at which the city was informed by the landowner that it would not be, or they were declining the possibility of reserving any property for a college campus?
I remember, I remember the comments. I don't remember the date. So, if that was the date, that was the date.
And what, again, was your title and position at the city at the time of this meeting?
At the time of this meeting, it would have been Economic Development Director.
What, in your recollection, was the tone and tenor of this meeting?
I recall the meeting being between myself, Bob Harrison, who was the city administrator, and Fred Butler, who was the mayor at the time, with Mr. Young and Mr. Evans. There had been a number of back-and-forth discussions about what potentially could be included in a Development Agreement with Polygon Northwest or Izaqua Highlands Investment Fund that would be that public benefit. You know, we had an existing Economic Development strategic plan that identified that one of the weaknesses in Izaqua was not having a place for higher education. And so, when I suggested that as maybe something that could be a win-win for the city and for the property owner, we started talking about the terms for how we could put that into a Development Agreement and make that make sense for both the city and the applicant. When we came to this meeting, we were informed by Izaqua Highlands Investment Fund that they no longer were interested in providing that amenity to the city. And so, we stopped having conversations about a Development Agreement at that point.
And who, which party first broached the possibility or concept of this college campus as being part of the future potential new Development Agreement?
So, that was a suggestion made by myself. I don't think that Mr. Young, Mr. Evans, or Mr. Strate knew about the city's desire to get a branch campus in the city. And so, I put that on the table as a suggestion that might, that I could see also could potentially benefit the property owner in creating an activity node for the balance of the property.
What was the quid pro quo, the consideration in favor of the property owner? Just that it would then have the opportunity to build out and utilize its purchased entitlement? Is that, was that the benefit that the landowner would obtain under that construct?
Well, I don't think we got to that level of detail. I think what happened at the meeting was that Mr. Young informed the city that they were no longer interested in pursuing this deal. And I was, I think I'd been described as being angry. I think I would say I was more confused by the turn of events. And ultimately, Mr. Evans, when I said, "Why, why are we, why are we stopping this conversation?", I was told that they could make more money doing something else.
And was the something else more residential development on the site?
They were, there was not really much further conversation at that point, it just ended.
But was it, was it your intent and the city's intent as the outcome of those discussions to ensure some type of a win-win scenario for both the city and the developer?
Absolutely.
And that, was that the flavor of those discussions?
That was the intent.
And why were, why were you even broaching that? Why was that even being discussed at that point?
It was, you know, I think what we were trying to do was, we understood that what Polygon Northwest purchased was generally not in their wheelhouse. Polygon Northwest was a residential builder. Through the process where we were negotiating the potential development agreement, we actually processed, I believe it was a short plat that allowed Polygon and IHIFC to split the property into basically a residential piece and then the commercial piece that is the subject of the conversations we're having at Development Commission.
And when did that occur, that divide, that split?
You know, I'm, I don't know those dates, maybe Ms. Sloman might?
Thank you. And you touched on this briefly, but I'd like to explore it a little further. Do you specifically recall the testimony from Ms. Heim and Mr. Young that you allegedly became very angry during this, this meeting?
I do.
Do you agree with that characterization?
I do not.
Could you please describe the relevant events as you do remember them in your own words?
Sure. I mean, like I said, we, we were in the process of working on a negotiated outcome that could be incorporated into a development agreement for IHIFC. And there were, we were, I think, in my opinion, still negotiating the terms of how that might work. When we had a meeting scheduled, I think it was my understanding, as well as Mr. Harrison and Mr. Butler's, that we were going to continue that discussion. And when Mr. Young and Mr. Evans came in and basically said they were not interested in that, I think it caught everyone by surprise. And so, you know, again, I think my reaction was more of surprise for, "If you're, if you don't want to, if you wanted to negotiate with me, just tell me so, and don't set up a meeting with the mayor and the city administrator to do that and drop the bomb." It just seemed a little, it was an interesting tactic, I thought.
Okay. But just to clarify, were you angry in the manner that has been testified by Mr. Young and Ms. Heim?
No, I was, I was not angry. I think there was someone else in the room who might have been angry. That would have been the city administrator at the time. He was clearly not happy with, I think, the position that IHIFC took. My, my-
Who was that city administrator?
That was Bob Harrison.
And he's no longer employed with the city?
He's no longer employed with the city.
And how did, how did Mr. Harrison manifest his anger or frustration or whatever term he used?
Well, he, he, I don't recall what he said. I believe it was, you know, it was fairly clear that he was unhappy with the way that the meeting had gone. So it was verbal. I don't, I mean, there was no yelling, there was no screaming, there were, you know, it was just, it was kind of a look on his face, looked like he was angry. But again, I don't know, I never talked to him about whether that made him angry. All I can speak to is my reaction, which was more just confusion because it wasn't what I thought was going to happen in that meeting.
Did you yell during that meeting?
Oh, no.
Did you scream?
No.
Did you curse?
No.
Did you storm out of the meeting room?
No.
Did you slam your door?
No.
And Bob Harrison do any of those things at the meeting?
Not that I recall, and neither did the mayor.
Did you ever express anger to Polygon or later to IHIFC regarding the landowner's decision to decline the college campus proposal?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think, what I'd like to say is that I believe that even though maybe it did not turn out the way that IHIFC wanted, I believe that we continued to work with them to try and get them to permits and development on their property. I think their vision for what they wanted was inconsistent with the entitlement that they had, and they tried to, I think, change that. And, you know, as, you know, as, you know, after a number of meetings with myself and Deputy City Administrator Moon, Emily Moon, we basically suggested that they needed to get community support if they were going to get the council swayed on that basically change of zoning, so.
Were there any further discussions after that meeting regarding the college campus proposal with IHIFC, to your recollection?
No.
The outcome of the landowner's decision not to pursue the college campus proposal in any way affect or influence your subsequent treatment of IHIFC's various project applications?
No.
Did you ever state to IHIFC that the college campus decision would impact your treatment of IHIFC's project applications?
No.
Are you aware of any action that you've taken or any statement that you've made that could be construed as indicating that the outcome of that decision influenced you at all in relation to IHIFC's project applications?
No.
I'm going to hand you an exhibit that's already in the, or I'm going to refer you to exhibit, refer you to exhibit S-111, please. This is already in the record.
Do you know which volume this is?
It's the very last exhibit.
Volume three of three, then?
Does this refresh your recollection? I'm going to ask you specifically about the consistency or inconsistency of the entitlement issue.
Yes.
Okay, could you expand on that, please?
Sure. So what this is, is, you know, this is, it starts off with an email from Derek Straight to myself with a copy to Gary Young dated July 2nd, 2013. And it talks about, it says it attaches a rough draft for a LOI, which is Letter of Intent, for the modification to the development agreement. And in this, Mr. Straight kind of starts by spelling out what Polygon would like to get out of a modification to the development agreement. So the first, the first numeric point under that is, "We would like to extend the term of the development agreement for a period of eight years."
And was the quid pro quo under this proposed arrangement more residential development entitlement for the landowner?
So, you know, I don't, I believe, you know, this is obviously just shy of six years ago.
True.
You know, so, Mr. Straight identifies in number two, P, so PB is Port Blakely, "would like to be able to convert some of its remaining commercial density to residential for use on the site." So, the development agreement, you know, back in the day, this was like one of the first development agreements ever, and it was, it was pretty ambitious. And so there was a provision in the original development agreement, it had 3,250 residential units, and it allowed the master developer to convert up to 700 additional residential units from commercial. So it basically envisioned this flexibility with land use to go from, anywhere from 3,250 to 3,950 residential units. And that got all done before Polygon purchased this property. What Mr. Straight is suggesting in his number two is that, you know, there really could be some more conversion happen to get some more residential out of the remaining commercial entitlement. And so, that's, I think, what is intended by his number two.
Okay. Were you here in the, the public hearing for the public testimony portion of this proceeding?
Yes.
Did you listen to the testimony of Mr. Nyström, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly?
Fred Nyström, yes, sir.
Yes.
I did.
Did you hear his comments to the effect that the city had, and this is a paraphrase, lost its integrity in reference to its, the city's treatment of IHIFC?
I did hear that.
Are you aware of any basis that the city could be accused of acting without integrity in relation to IHIFC?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
Have you personally ever acted without integrity in your treatment of and dealings with IHIFC?
I have not.
Are you aware of any of your staff that has acted without integrity?
I, I, I would, I am not aware of any of my staff acting without integrity towards IHIFC.
Have you ever been accused of acting without integrity by anyone except Mr. Nyström in relation to this issue?
I don't think he was personally talking about me, maybe he was. No, I have never been accused of acting without integrity. Actually, being certified as both a planner through American Institute of Certified Planners and as an economic developer through the Economic Development Council, I have ethics that include integrity that I have to live by, and so I take that very seriously.
Have you lived by those and adhered to those ethical standards in your dealings with IHIFC?
As with all applicants, yes.
Did you hear Ms. Heim's testimony regarding your alleged opposition to IHIFC's proposed development?
I did hear that.
Did you agree with her characterization of your sentiment?
No, I, 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 there's a difference between being opposed to something and liking it. And, you know, do I like it? Do I think it's the greatest development proposal ever? No. Do I oppose it? No.
Did you ever express to IHIFC that you were opposed to their proposed development?
I don't think so.
I'd like to call your attention to exhibits C-5 and C-6, which were previously introduced into the record. Give you a moment to access and refresh yourself with respect to those documents.
Okay. You want to start on five?
Please, I just would like you to, if you would, please review them both for a moment. With respect to C-5, I'm not as concerned with the cover email dated November 17th, 2017, and more referring to the attached memorandum dated November 17th, 2017.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Could you please identify exhibit C-6 for the record?
Where do I find C-6?
It should be right after C-5.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was an attachment to C-5, sorry, I got lost in the shuffle. So, C-5, I mean, C-6 is listed as attachment for, I'm going to assume that's attachment for to maybe a council committee meeting? Maybe, I have no idea what attachment, this is, I'm kind of, I'm going to need to phone a friend if I, if I need to figure out what this is attached to.
Where I'm going with this, Mr. Niven, I'm going to, I'd like to ask you, does, what is contained in the November 16th, 2017 document-
Yes.
-that is identified as exhibit C-6, does that reflect staff's proposed alternative or proposed option for vesting in the replacement regulations legislative process?
So, what I would say is, what, what this attachment is, attachment for dated 16 November 2017, spells out the three choices for vesting that were provided to the city council for their consideration. You know, option one was what I said earlier, we, we didn't have to include vesting language in the replacement regulations. And the reason, if you look at the summary section on the, on the back of that, you know, what we identified was, we thought there was an advantage to including vesting language because it would be a clearer outcome for all those that were affected. And then, alternatives two and three were basically, one was the initially proposed vesting language by the administration, and then option three was basically state statute vesting.
So, just for clarity, what was staff's recommended vesting alternative or option?
Our initial vesting option was consistent with what the council enacted with the temporary development moratorium that was like 2016. And the reason why we thought that made sense-
I'm sorry, what was the substance of that approach?
So basically, what, what that said was, if you had a complete application in with the city, that your land use application was vested.
And would that vesting protection under that preferred option, the staff recommended option, have included or extended to site development applications?
Absolutely.
Okay. And if I could refer you to page seven of exhibit C-5, in the section heading Roman numeral four entitled Vesting?
Yes.
You see that?
Yes.
Could you please read aloud the recommendation?
Sure. The recommendation under section four vesting says, "Include the proposed vesting language, comma, which has been slightly edited for clarity, see 1819B360 for proposed language."
And that was, just to clarify, the, the same staff recommended vesting option that you just described to me?
I believe so, I believe so, yes. Since that attachment is, attachment for to this document.
Were you directly involved in the formulation and preparation of this staff-preferred option?
Yes.
Could you describe your involvement?
I drafted it.
You did draft it?
I did. I did.
Did you have assistance with, from your staff?
So, you know, I never give them credit, so I don't know. I, you know, Ms. Sloman may have assisted. I believe what we did was, again, like I said, the, the vesting language that was used for the temporary development moratorium, which was worked on by myself and Mr. Tanaka with Ogden Murphy Wallace, was basically lifted and moved over to the initial draft of the replacement regulations.
If the preferred vesting option had been adopted by the city council, what would have the, what would the effect have been with respect to IHIFC's various SDP and ASDP applications that are at issue in this hearing?
If the council would have included the initial vesting language in the replacement regulations, I believe that the applications that are subject to the development commission's consideration at this time would have been vested to the development agreement and not the replacement regulations.
In your understanding, Mr. Niven, was staff's preferred or recommended vesting option more or less generous to project applicants than the vesting protection afforded under state law?
Significantly more generous.
Were you aware of this fact when you made your recommendation to the city council?
Absolutely.
Did IHIFC publicly support staff's recommendation for the preferred vesting option?
That might be a complicated answer. I, you know, so, this was, there were many meetings happening at this time. You know, the, the comments that were coming from IHIFC, at least my recollection of them, were not in support of, they weren't necessarily in support of this language or not in support of this language. They were lobbying the council to slow the process down.
I'm sorry, who's they? IHIFC?
Yes.
And what process are you referring to?
The process of adoption of the replacement regulations. So, so, so the development agreement, even though we'd reached the build-out, the end of the build-out period, was still in effect until the adoption of the replacement regulations. During the process to adopt the replacement regulations, IHIFC was trying to, in my opinion, trying to get the city council to slow down in the adoption of the replacement regulations. And so, through that effort, it would be hard to answer the question that you posed, which was, were they in support of the vesting language that was initially proposed by staff? Because that message would have been lost in the bigger message that they had, which was, this is all not well baked. We've hired an architect who thinks this is really confusing. We don't think that you should adopt this at this time. And that's, again, all my opinion from what I saw in the testament, in the public comment that was provided by IHIFC and their attorney.
And the, the public comment you're referring to was in the context of city council meeting or land and shore meetings, or what forum?
Primarily land and shore committee meetings, which is why I'm using the word public comment and not testimony.
And this, the timeframe for those comments and that, those positions being expressed was approximately when?
Kind of October, November of 17, because we had initially hoped to get the replacement regulations adopted by the city council in December of 17.
When approximately was staff's preferred option regarding its vesting recommendation to the city council made public?
It would have been in November, December of 17.
As of that point, had the, the policy direction already been made to establish, or at least to propose, a 1.0 minimum FAR requirement and the requirement for structured parking as part of the replacement regulations?
I believe the, I believe the FAR was, but I'm not sure on the structured parking. So, I don't, I can't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not that cognizant on the dates, so I'm not sure when those things kind of were added to the proposed documents.
Do you recall if the structured parking was borrowed from the SIDS, the SEI DDS regulations?
So, yes. I can say that the reason that the structured parking provision in the draft replacement regulations was included was the city had just finished going through, as part of the moratorium, one of the work items was about density and parking, and there was new provisions put in Central Isequa that included the requirement for structured parking for residential, commercial, and retail uses.
Does, does that fact or recollection help refresh your memory at all on that issue?
I'm, I'm not good on dates, so if, you know, all I can tell you is factually, that's what happened. If you need me to put some months and years to that, I'm, I'm going to be struggling.
Sure. I'm more just asking whether it was roughly approximate in time that the FAR and structured parking requirements were formally proposed as part of the replacement regulations in relation to the, the preferred vesting alternative that, that staff had recommended? Is that approximately all the same time?
I can't answer that. What I can tell you is that those are not hinged. So, the FAR, the structured parking, is one thing. Vesting is something different, and they weren't really connected in terms of the rationale for why they were included in the proposed code language.
Did the city council ultimately accept staff's recommendation for the preferred vesting option?
No.
And what, what option did the council ultimately choose?
State, consistent with state statute.
And I believe, you kept your previous testimony that the, the state vesting framework was less generous to applicants than the staff-preferred option. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you know why the city council made that decision?
I do. So, it was the city council's position that they supported a more generous vesting provision for the moratorium because that was, that was a, an emergency action that was taken. Applicants had no forewarning that that was coming, and therefore, if someone had a complete application in but did not have a, a state vested permit, they believed that they should give them the leniency of kind of the longer leash. Whereas, for the development agreements, that build-out period was well-known for 20 years plus for Isequa Highlands, and I think it was 15 years plus for Talis, and therefore, they should have known.
Did the council express that explanation or position publicly?
Yes.
Is that part of the deliberations?
It would have been part of deliberations.
But just to clarify your earlier testimony, staff, specifically including yourself, had publicly proposed and supported a vesting option under which IHIFC's ASDP and SDP applications would be deemed vested to the standards under the development regulations, or, excuse me, the development agreement, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to turn your attention to Exhibit S9. This is also a document that's been previously submitted into the record. I have a copy for you if you'd like to see it.
No, I'm good. Wait, no, I'm on C9. Volume two, volume one.
Yes, S9.
Yep.
The title of this document is "A Commercial and Multi-Family Building Permit Submittel Requirements." I believe that you've either heard and/or actually testified to this document and its effect. Are you, are you familiar with that?
Yes. I, I am familiar with this.
Did you hear Ms. Heim's testimony concerning this document?
Yes.
Okay. And I will kind of euphemistically refer to it as the web document because I think that was how it was characterized before. To your knowledge, is this document referenced anywhere in the 1996 development agreement?
No, it is not.
To your knowledge, did you or any other city staff member ever purport to enforce the land use permit notice of decision issuance provision on page two of the web document against IHIFC?
I am unaware of that.
Do you personally do that?
No.
To, to your knowledge, did you or any other staff member ever discuss this document with IHIFC?
I have not. I'm unaware that any of my staff have.
Do you recall the first time that IHIFC ever referred to this document?
The first time?
The city?
The first time I heard about this document being an issue was during these proceedings.
During these, this hearing before the development commission?
Yes, sir.
So, to your knowledge, IHIFC never referenced it to the city or discussed it with the city prior to these development commission proceedings?
I have not seen any written documentation that would support that.
To your knowledge, did you or any other city staff members ever tell IHIFC that they could not submit a building permit application until after a land use permit notice of decision had been issued for their property?
I have not, and I would expect my staff would not have either because it would be inconsistent with city code.
Did IHIFC ever attempt to submit a building permit application for its Isequa Highlands property, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
To your understanding, Mr. Niven, could IHIFC have submitted one or more building permit applications for its property without waiting for a land use permit notice of decision?
Yes.
Do you have any understanding or belief or explanation as to why IHIFC did not submit a building permit application?
Other than it is not a customary way for developers to go through the permitting process system, it is, it is a potential high-risk way of going through the permitting process system because changes that would occur through a land use review could affect a building permit application, and the amount of money invested in preparing those applications is significant.
So, are those practical and financial concerns or legal concerns, to your understanding?
Practical.
So, there, there may be some practical explanation or financial explanation as to why IHIFC didn't submit a building permit application. Is that correct?
Correct.
But you're not aware of any legal prohibition on IHIFC submitting a building permit application?
There is no legal prohibition.
Do you recall your original testimony regarding the provisions of IMC 1801O5OC and vesting provisions under that?
Vaguely. Do I need to pull it up? I can pull it up.
Good.
Sorry, I've got too many things in front of me.
Oh, IMC 1801O5O sub C. Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that refresh your recollection?
Yes.
About your testimony?
Yes.
Do you still agree with the testimony that you gave regarding this provision and its application to IHIFC's situation?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we've been going for over an hour, and I'm happy to continue if that's the, the commission's preference, but it might be appropriate to take a break as I'm about to shift subjects.
Yes, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.[273.77]
What is the policy rationale for imposing a structured parking requirement?
So, the basis is, and the rationale is, Issaquah is only eight square miles. We're relatively geographically a small city. As we continue to densify and accommodate the county growth targets that were given through GMA, we have to use our land more efficiently. And the whole premise of the Central Issaquah Plan, which is the sub-area plan for the valley floor outside of Old Town, is to anticipate and allow for the redevelopment of lower-density suburban development into more higher-density mixed-use and more vertical development to allow for more efficient use of the property.
Is structured parking typically associated with a particular type or quality of development in your observation and experience as a planner?
Yes. So, as you, as it relates to commercial development, structured parking is part of the develop, if you were building office, Class A office space has structured parking. And, you know, so there is a certain amount of expectation of, you know, if you were building office out, it would likely not have surface parking unless it was Class B or C.
You describe what is meant by the terms Class A or Class B or Class C in that regard?
Sure. So, Class A, so, without spending too much time here, Class A is kind of what you'd consider your higher-quality professional office buildings. You know, when tenants come to lease those spaces, they expect assigned parking, they expect, you know, structured parking is an expect, a common expectation for that type of office classification.
So, is it an accurate characterization that structured parking is typically associated with higher-quality development?
Yes, it is.
Are the FAR and structured parking requirements contained in the Issaquah Highland replacement regulations identical to those contained in the replacement regulations for the Talis area of the city?
Identical, yes.
Do you explain the reason for that identical treatment?
The, the policy direction which drove the inclusion of both the structured parking requirements and the FAR are as valid as they are in Central Issaquah as they are in the rest of the city, which includes Issaquah Highlands and Talis. So, it would not have been rational to not apply the same standards to both of those sub-areas.
Have any property owners or project applicants in the Talis area ever contended that application of the FAR or structured parking standards would render the development of their property economically unviable?
No.
Besides IHIFC, have any property owners or project applicants within the Issaquah Highlands area, to your knowledge, ever objected to the FAR or structured parking requirements as leading to economically unviable development options?
Not to my knowledge.
Does the city of Issaquah itself own property within the Talis area?
We do. We own retail property in Talis. The remaining part of the village square is owned by the city and is basically zoned, for lack of a better term, for retail development.
Is that property currently developed?
No, it's not.
So, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Niven, the exact same FAR requirements and structured parking requirements that IHIFC is objecting to in this case are applicable to property that the city itself owns?
Yes.
And the city imposed those requirements on its Talis property when approximately?
It's, it actually, the Talis replacement regulations were adopted before Issaquah Highlands, so just slightly before.
Did you hear the testimony to the effect that the FAR and structured parking requirements contained in the replacement regulations were targeted at IHIFC?
I believe I heard something similar to that, yes.
Do you agree with that characterization?
No. I think there was, the, the reason for, as I mentioned, the reason for their inclusion in the replacement regulations was policy direction from the city council as it related to accommodating the growth that's expected within our community.
Thank you. Did you hear the testimony and/or argument regarding the, the length of time the city has taken to evaluate and process IHIFC's various project proposals?
Yes.
Did the city process IHIFC's applications within the timeframes contained in the 1996 Development Agreement?
Uh, no.
Why not?
We were lacking adequate staffing resources to be able to move those applications at a quicker pace.
Did you attempt to move those applications forward within a more expeditious timeframe?
Given the resources we had at the time, and we, there's been testimony about the city's staffing resources and turnover of planning staff, and so, all of that is entwined together.
Was there any deliberate intent to delay IHIFC's various project applications and their processing, to your knowledge?
No.
Were you aware of any intent to that effect by any members of your staff?
No.
To your understanding, Mr. Niven, does the 1996 Development Agreement contain a remedy for when the city fails to meet the processing timeframes?
Yes.
In that document? What is that remedy?
So, the Development Agreement is broken into appendices, and Appendix L is titled Processing of Land Use and Construction Permits, and under Section 9, which is entitled Remedies, 9.5 is subtitled Refund of Fees for Delay, and it reads, "If the city fails to act within the time period specified in this Appendix L, then fees shall be refunded as provided herein. The amount to be refunded shall be calculated as follows," and it goes on, it goes on from there.
Thank you. I'm gonna have my colleague hand you and hand out to the commission and council a document that will be introduced into the record as Exhibit C-50. Parts of this may already be in the record, but I'm providing it for clarity even if it is redundant.
Thank you.
Mr. Niven, are you familiar with this document?
I'm gaining familiarity, yes. This is an email exchange that begins with Ms. Heim to Ms. Sloman. The subject is SDPs. It's dated October 26, 2017, and it ends with an email from myself to Ms. Heim with CCs to Ms. Sloman, Mr. Malaney, Mr. Haney, Ms. Moon, Mr. Harrison, and Mr. Shaw dated November 1, 2017.
Could you please read the last paragraph of your November 1, 2017 response to Ms. Heim aloud?
Sure. Okay. It states, "As for permit timing pursuant to Appendix L, Section 9.7, the city is at risk for returning MDRT permitting fees if timelines are not met. If you would like to discuss how much of your MDRT fees should be returned, we can have that conversation."
Is the reference to that section of Appendix L the, the remedy or recourse that you were referring to in your, your prior testimony?
It is.
Did you and Ms. Heim ever have that quote "conversation" following your invitation in the November 1, 2017 email?
I do not believe I got a response back from this email.
Is it still your position that those permit fees would be returnable to IHIFC upon request if the permit processing timeframes within the agreement would have not been met?
That's my reading of the Development Agreement. I would need to confer with the city attorney, but that's my understanding of this section of the Development Agreement.
Thank you. Did you hear the testimony from Mr. Malaney and Ms. Heim regarding the issue of credit for mitigation that had been provided or otherwise funded by previous owners of IHIFC's property?
Yes.
Did you hear the testimony that IHIFC provided an evaluation of mitigation issues for the city's consideration?
Yes.
Has the mitigation issue been resolved, to your understanding?
It has not.
Why not?
I believe that the issue got hung up in that, you know, the, getting to an agreeable outcome on this is, is somewhat complicated. Mr. Malaney had provided a, kind of an analysis, if you will, of what I believe he believed his clients were entitled to. As I discussed that with the city attorney, the city attorney's belief was that you don't vest to mitigation, and he wanted to have Mr. Malaney provide a, kind of a legal basis for the rationale that was provided in the letter drafted by Mr. Malaney. So, so, to my recollection, that conversation stopped there, and I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so it's not my place to really weigh in. It seemed like that was more of a legal issue to be worked out amongst the lawyers.
Do you recall Mr. Young's testimony that you assured him that there would be no, or quote "no gap," end quote, between the Development Agreement and the city's new zoning?
I, I, I remember that, yes.
Did you tell Mr. Young that?
So, I, I, I don't remember. You know, my belief was that what we were trying to do was to implement replacement regulations that were consistent with the Development Agreement. That's what we told all the property owners in both of the villages. From a land use standpoint, I think we were successful in getting that outcome. In other words, like, land uses, so zoning, you know, is consistent with the entitlement that was remaining on parcels within both Issaquah Highlands and Talis. Things like, I think primarily, the FAR and the structured parking did not end up that way. It was not recommendations from the administration to add those provisions within the replacement regulations. They, that came from the legislative process in the city council. And so, you know, even though my expectation to the property owners was we were gonna do our best to get an equivalent in the replacement regulations, I think you could definitely point to certain pieces that didn't end up that way.
Okay. Did you construe or intend your response back to Mr. Young to be a legal opinion of any sort?
No.
And did you intend it to be a binding promise regarding what the content and substance of the replacement regulations would ultimately be?
No, because it's a legislative action, and I can't speak for the city council. I would not ever try to speak for the city council. The best that I can do is to try and provide recommendations to the city council and to help applicants understand what I believe the city council's views are on certain policies and provisions of code.
Thank you. Do you recall the testimony concerning how long these proceedings before the Development Commission have taken in relation to what your original estimate may have been?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'd like to call your attention to Exhibit S-2. This is a document that's already in the record.
Okay. Hang on. Okay?
And can you please turn to page 2 and read the second sentence of Paragraph 8?
Okay.
And can you please turn to page 2 and read the second sentence of Paragraph 8?
Okay. So, Paragraph 8, second sentence, starting with although not certain?
Yes.
Okay. "Although not certain, I anticipate that a final decision on IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications will be issued in June or July, and that a decision on IHIFC's Plenary Platte will be issued in August or September of 2018."
Did that statement reflect your good-faith estimate of when decisions would be issued on IHIFC's various applications at that time?
I thought that those were reasonable timelines for the permits that were in City Review, yes.
Can you explain why those estimates have, have not been proven accurate?
Um, you know, no, I cannot. I don't, there's, as you heard from Ms. Lynn, there were complexities with the applications that apparently needed to be worked through. But, you know, a normal ASDP and SDP should have been able to have been processed within that amount of time.
In your observation and professional experience, Mr. Niven, is, is the volume of information and testimony and evidence that has been submitted into the record in this proceeding roughly equivalent to that for a, a quote-unquote "normal" SDP or ASDP?
Oh, no. Not, no, not even, I mean, no.
How do, how do those two compare?
So, if, if you had an appeal of an administrative decision, and I've had a few, there's, you know, there's typically one day of testimony and, you know, maybe 50 documents combined that might get included in the record. This is the most I've ever seen.
And to clarify, did you anticipate this volume of testimony and evidence when you made that statement in Exhibit S-2?
No, I did not.
Following the adoption of the replacement regulations for Issaquah Highlands, did you ever communicate to IHIFC that the city would process IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications in a manner that did not involve the Development Commission?
Not that I'm aware of.
Following the adoption of the replacement regulations, did you communicate with Ms. Sloman and/or other members of your staff regarding the procedure that would be used to process IHIFC's SDP and ASDP applications?
Yes.
How did you communicate with them?
I believe we discussed the process that it would be reviewed under, and, you know, that, yes. So, the, so we just, we talked about the process, and that's what we're following.
Was there a miscommunication at some point between yourself and Ms. Sloman?
Yes, I think there was definitely a disconnect between myself and Ms. Sloman. You know, these, these applications were submitted under the Development Agreement, and I think she was initially processing them that way, and then the replacement regulations were enacted, and what should have happened, should have been a pivot to the new process, and I think it, she didn't realize that that was to happen initially. So, that was, that was the discussion that we had.
Did you eventually have that, that conversation or that communication and correct the processing issue?
Yes.
Do you recall roughly or approximately when that communication occurred?
Uh, I don't, sorry.
Thank you.
Not good with dates.
Was there any, ever any intent on your part to deliberately mislead IHIFC regarding the procedure that would be used to process its ASDP and SDP applications?
No. I think, you know, just, just to be clear, because I think it needs to be said, is, this is, we don't end Development Agreements annually. This is the first time in city history that we ended two long-term Development Agreements and put replacement regulations in place. And every time you do something for the first time, you're likely to misstep a few times, and I would characterize some of the miscommunications as missteps potentially and not intentioned deceiving on the city's part.
Apart from IHIFC's ASDP and SDP applications, were there any other ASDP or SDP applications from other applicants in the Issaquah Highlands that had been submitted before the Development Agreement was terminated but were still in process at that time?
Um, I'm gonna need you to defer that to Ms. Sloman.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll be happy to. Following the adoption of the replacement regulations, has the city processed any ASDP or SDP applications in the Issaquah Highlands from other applicants using a procedure different than the one used for this proceeding?
Would you please state that one more time?
Have there been any other applications submitted for ASDPs or SDPs in the Issaquah Highlands since the replacement regulations were adopted?
So, the, there were applications running concurrently with shelters' applications. Those applications were by Polygon Northwest for, we've heard, single-family, there was a single-family North Platte. There was also two, there was a townhouse, North Townhouse South and Block 4, multi-family project of theirs. Those have received permits, and those are in different phases of construction.
So, the permits for those referenced applications have already been issued, if I understood you correctly?
They have been issued.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you remember the testimony and argument in this proceeding concerning IHIFC's contention that the Development Agreement lacked jurisdiction to conduct these proceedings?
Um, yes.
Are you aware of any attempted appeals or legal challenges by IHIFC regarding that issue?
Yes.
Did you assist in the city's legal defense of those appeals, legal challenges?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask my colleague to distribute a document that will be designated as Exhibit C-51. Do you please identify that document, Mr. Niven?
Uh, yes, this is a, um, let me go through it really quickly before I speak. This is a decision by the city's hearing examiner on most, it was, it was, it was an appeal brought before the city's hearing examiner, appeal of vesting determination in a letter from the city. So, this was their attempt to appeal a decision that, well, it was not a decision, it was a letter that I had written on vesting to the city's hearing examiner, and ultimately this was dismissed by the hearing examiner.
And this particular decision of the hearing examiner was in relation to an appeal of what document, Mr. Niven? Was it the, a challenge to the September 2018 staff report that you prepared for purposes of this proceeding?
Unless I'm misunderstanding, I believe it's the April 4th letter. I mean, it filed an appeal of a vesting determination in a letter from the city dated April 4, 2018.
Could you please turn to page 2 under the heading Current Appeal?
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry, it's late.
Does that refresh your recollection of this document, Mr. Niven?
Yes. So, there's been multiple appeals to the hearing examiner. This, this latest version, the one that's listed under Current Appeal on page 2 of 9, which begins on page 2 of 9, was regarding Shelter Holdings' request to dismiss this from the purview of the Development Commission.
Thank you. And what was the outcome of the hearing examiner's decision?
So, the hearing examiner granted the city's motion to dismiss the appeal.
Thank you. Do you know if IHIFC appealed that hearing examiner decision to Superior Court?
I don't. I assume they did, but I don't.
Thank you. I'm gonna now have my colleague distribute another document designated as Exhibit C-52. Do you please read the heading of that document, Mr. Niven?
Uh, so, this was a motion for reconsideration by IH, IHIFC of the city hearing examiner's decision that we just discussed.
Yes. And what was the outcome of that motion for reconsideration?
Having considered the applicant's reconsideration request, the cities, and the city's response, the request is denied.
Thank you. Are you aware of IHIFC filing a lawsuit in King County Superior Court attempting to seek a writ of prohibition that would prevent these Development Commission proceedings?
I believe that to be true, although I leave most of that to my legal counsel.
Thank you. I'll hand out another exhibit designated C-53. And could you please read the case number and title of that document?
Uh, yes. In the, this is in the Superior Court of the State of Washington in and for King County, Order Regarding City of Issaquah's Motion to Strike and Order Denying Application for Writ of Prohibition/ Direct Review.
And could you please turn to the second page and read aloud the ordered, judged, and decreed statement immediately before the judge's signature block?
Uh, it says, "Ordered, adjudged, and decreed that IHIFC's application for a writ of prohibition and for direct review shall be and is hereby denied."
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Niven, do you recall the testimony previously concerning- Finally, Mr. Niven, do you recall the testimony previously concerning the, the meeting notes or minutes, as they were characterized, that Ms. Heim took during her various meetings with Issaquah staff?
Yes.
Did Ms. Heim or anyone else at IHIFC ever provide you or city staff members with a copy of those notes prior to these proceedings?
No, the first time I found out that there were notes by Ms. Heim that were alleged meeting minutes were during these proceedings.
So Ms. Heim did not inform you that she was taking notes during those meetings?
She did not inform me, no.
Thank you. No further questions.
Whether Ms. Heim was taking notes or not, I don't recall. If she probably was, Mr. Malaney was probably taking notes as well.
So why did she need to tell you that she was taking notes if she was taking notes in front of you?
Don't know.
Did you have to see those notes?
I did not know what the purpose of those notes were, other than for her own recollection and personal use.
Did you take any notes of your own about any of those meetings?
I did not.
You referred at the beginning of your testimony, Mr. Niven, about your old copy of the development agreement that you have with you tonight. Did I understand that correctly?
I have my copy of the development agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. And does it have any notes in it?
I can look. Do you want me to look through it? I mean, there might be something written in the margin, but it's...
Yes, that's what I'm asking. And if so, I'm also wondering whether you have provided that to us in discovery.
I can't. I have no idea what was provided in discovery that was handled by the city clerk.
Why don't you, rather than look through the whole thing, why don't you turn to Section 3.2 regarding vesting? And let's see if you have any notes on that section.
No. It's, it is what it is. I scribbled an arrow over here.
Okay. And how about the section, is it 513, the section about termination? Okay. So in Section 513, Mr. Niven, in your copy, you've highlighted the last sentence.
I did.
Read that sentence to us, please.
Upon such adoption, this agreement shall terminate, and thereafter, the UGA portion of the property, capital P, shall be governed by the adopted city zoning and related development regulations.
Okay. So that sentence, does it not, says that after adoption of the replacement regulations, which happened in March of last year, correct?
Yes.
That thereafter, the word that sentence uses is thereafter, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thereafter would mean after March of 2018, correct?
Yes.
But you're saying we're not vested pursuant to applications that you admitted were complete, that were submitted before then, correct?
I'm saying that your applications, your plat application is vested, and your SDP and ASTP applications are not vested because they did not have a building permit or were part of a plat at the time of the adoption of the replacement regulations.
Well, the development agreement, Mr. Niven, allows one to vest to site development permit applications, does it not?
The development agreement did allow vesting to a complete application, yes.
Okay. And the language about termination that we just read uses the word thereafter to refer to the period of time after adoption of the replacement record, regulations, correct?
That's what it says, yes.
But you're denying my client's vested rights to the SDP application and ASTP application before this commission, even though they were submitted and deemed complete before the adoption of the replacement regulations, correct?
So my, my...
Is that correct? Is that what you're doing?
My opinion is that...
Is that what you're doing, Mr. Niven?
Can I answer your question?
Yes. Is that what you're doing?
I'm gonna answer, my opinion is that those permit applications were vested to a contract that expired.
Mr. Niven, I'm not asking you for your rationale, I'm asking you what you're doing. Is it not true that you are denying vested rights to my client for the applications before this commission, even though they were submitted and deemed complete before the effective date of the new regulations? That's a yes or no answer. Then we'll go into your explanation.
I'm, you know, I'm, I will answer it the way I'm comfortable answering it, or I won't. I mean, so if you want my answer, I'm gonna give you my answer. And then if you would like to redirect based on my answer, we can do that.
Mr. Niven, why can't you tell us and acknowledge what you're doing?
I can tell you what I believe I'm doing.
You, you want to provide an explanation, which I'm going to engage with you on. Why won't you admit that you are denying vested rights to applications that you personally deemed complete and vested in your November email, well before the replacement regulations were adopted?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna respectfully object here. This is crossing the line into badgering. I would respectfully ask that the, Mr. Schneider rephrase his question or respect the witness's answer, that it's been asked multiple times.
A witness who refuses to answer a simple question and is repeatedly asked to answer that question and refuses to do so is not being badgered. The witness is the one who is misbehaving and not the person asking the questions. It's a yes or no answer, and I'm entitled to it.
I think you're characterizing my position incorrectly because you're leaving out certain words. What we said was that they were vested to the development agreement. So if you want to add "to" the development agreement in your question, I'm happy to answer it because that's what I think we were understanding, is they were vested to the terms of the development agreement, and then that changed when the development agreement expired.
Okay. Are you aware, Mr. Niven, or you were here throughout these proceedings, including for my opening statement, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you saw, we projected on the screen, the language from the recent decision of Division 1 of the Court of Appeals that says, "New legislation cannot be applied retroactively if it is inconsistent with vested rights." Do you recall that?
Generally.
Okay. So what authority are you relying on that the replacement regulations adopted in March can retroactively take away the vested rights you acknowledged in November?
Because they were vested for a limited period of time, in our opinion. And I know that you disagree with that, and that's fine. But in our opinion, that there was vesting to a contract that expired, and then new regulations applied. The legislative process decided what the vesting would be on remaining applications within this geography. So my position is that we believe that the vesting was there while the contract was in place, and then when the contract expired, it, it went away.
So the development agreement that we're talking about created the regulations that apply, applied for more than 20 years in the Issaquah Highlands, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so you're saying that the city council could deny or take away, divest, retroactively remove rights that vested to those development regulations, correct?
That were provided through a limited contract, yes.
And where does the contract say that the rights that one vests to terminate at the end of the contract?
It says that the new regulations apply as soon as they're adopted.
Yes, thereafter, the very word we've been talking about, correct?
Right.
But you're applying them retroactively. You're not applying them thereafter, to my client at least, correct?
I believe that we are applying them to the non-vested permits, whereas the plat application is being vested to the terminated document. So I think there's, I think you have both things happening, not one or the other.
But we're gonna get to the plat, but right now, I'd like to talk about the site development permit, the SDPs and ASTPs. You just said they weren't vested, but you acknowledged they were vested, correct?
I said they were vested to the development agreement.
Right. And the development agreement says that the new regulations apply thereafter when replacement regulations are adopted. So I'm asking for your authority, either in the law or in the language of the development agreement itself, that says rights that vested go away when the development agreement is replaced by the replacement regulations, even though the development agreement itself uses the word thereafter.
It's, it's my understanding, and I believe the city's position, that all of the provisions in the development agreement, vesting, the standards, everything disappeared, went away at the end of this contract, and had to be replaced by new code language, which is why there was anticipation of replacement regulations when this document was adopted in 1996.
So let's talk for a moment about Polygon's applications, Mr. Niven. Have you applied the same theory that you've articulated here tonight to Polygon's applications?
So we talked about this before. Polygon's applications are covered through a separate development agreement.
It's, let's switch over to plats for a moment, Mr. Niven. Polygon's single-family, Westridge Single Family North plat is a plat that was submitted in July of 2017 and was noticed along with my client's plat in December of that year, correct?
I don't know the answer to that. I was not responsible for the review and the processing of that plat application. That would be Ms. Sloman.
All right. I'm gonna pull up the exhibits in a moment, Mr. Niven, but before I do that, are you aware that Ms. Sloman has written a letter to my client telling my client that its plat application is going to be processed under the procedures in the replacement regulations?
I am, I know that Ms. Sloman issued a letter to IHIFC regarding the plat processing. I have not had an opportunity to read that and consider that application, or that letter. So I know it exists. I don't know the contents of it.
Okay. So you're not aware that she is telling my client that its process is going to be the replacement regulation process and not the process in the development agreement?
I, I can review that letter if we want to add it in as an exhibit. I don't have it. I haven't reviewed it.
Well, I'm not asking now whether you've reviewed it, I'm asking you whether you're aware that that's what it says.
I'm not aware that that's what that says.
So she didn't consult with you before sending that out?
I don't recall.
Okay. Do you agree with Ms. Sloman that my client is not vested to the process in the development agreement?
So I'm gonna assume that Ms. Sloman conferred with the city attorney on the issuance of this letter. Assuming that she did, then I would support the contents of this letter, yes.
Well, it's, I don't think that's responsive to my question, Mr. Niven. Do you agree that my client is not vested to the procedures in the development agreement for its plat application?
If, again, I believe if Ms. Sloman conferred with the city attorney on this, then I concur with what this says, which is that the process of the plat is not vested, the substance of the plat is, is what I believe this to say. So the difference would be that the plat would be processed similar to plats, well, it would be whatever the process was identified in the replacement regulations.
Didn't your department process Polygon's single-family north plat noticed at the same time as my client's plat under the procedures in the development agreement?
I don't, I can't answer questions about the Polygon plat. I wasn't part of that process.
Before you read this letter and made assumptions about Ms. Sloman communicating with the city attorney, was it your opinion that procedures in the development agreement were not something that we were vested to?
We had talked about that with your client from time to time... identified that maybe, for example, the plat might come to Development Commission in lieu of the Urban Village Development Commission, depending on whether it was after the replacement regulations were adopted. So I believe that shouldn't come as too much of a shock, but maybe it does. It seems like we had at least broached that subject with your client in the past.
Mr. Niven, my question goes to your opinion as the official responsible for vesting determinations. Was it your opinion before you saw this letter that my client was vested to the procedures in the development agreement for the plat application?
So my opinion on vesting is in collaboration with consult from the city attorney pursuant to the city code. So I would want to discuss this with counsel before providing a position on that, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the transcripts of the prior hearings there, Mr. Niven?
I don't believe so.
You're handing one up.
Thank you.
Could you turn, please, to the October 24, 2018 hearing before this commission?
Okay.
And turn to page 23.
Okay.
These are questions and answers between you and me, so I'm actually going to start. I'm going to read the question. I'd like you to read the answer you gave in October in front of this commission.
I don't have, I don't have questions and answers. I have, I have something different. Am I in the wrong place? I'm sorry. Okay. 20, 23?
23.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm going to start, actually, on the last line of page 22, question. Okay, when one vests, does one vest to, well, let's, let's, let me rephrase the question. So we have the development agreement. You refer to it as a contract. State law refers to it as a development, exercise of the police power. So if one vests to the development agreement, including Exhibit L, which is the process part of the development agreement, correct? Your answer?
My answer was, that's my recollection, yes.
Question, okay, then your department, in fact, has treated people who have vested to the development agreement as vested to the process in Appendix L, correct?
My answer was yes.
Question, and you have done that for multiple Polygon projects, for example?
My answer was yes.
Okay, so in October, you testified under oath in front of this commission that one does vest to the process in the development agreement, correct? Exhibit L in particular. I was asking you to confirm that in October, you testified under oath that one does vest to Appendix L, the process part of the development agreement, if one vests to the development agreement, correct?
Yes.
And the city has treated, Polygon is vested to the process in the development agreement, correct?
We have in the past, yes.
And including on the plat that was noticed the same day, again, you haven't seen that, so let's pull out that exhibit, which is. And Ms. Lynn testified about this. She testified about the three notices that went out simultaneously, and I suggest you that Exhibit 101, S. 101, are those three notices, but I'd like you to confirm it.
Yes, those are, there's two Polygon notice of applications and one shelter holdings.
Okay, and the, one of the Polygon applications is for the Westridge North single-family plat, correct?
Yes, it is. That's the first one.
Are you saying you don't know whether your department processed that plat under the procedures in the development agreement?
I did, I do not know how, what, what methodology was followed for that plat application. I did not follow it.
You will agree the notices were sent out on the same day, correct? December 27 of 2017 for all three of them?
Yes, I do.
So what does vesting mean to you, Mr. Niven? Give us your definition.
Okay. So vesting, the way I understand it, provides surety to a property owner or developer about the, basically the rules under which they can develop their property. And to be vested means that you, the city or whatever jurisdiction, county, whatever, cannot change the rules unless it's for public safety that would then take away any ability or rights from a property owner to develop.
That's what you're doing here, isn't it?
Well, so, you know, I'm not a lawyer. Never said I was. Maybe I'm one of the few people that aren't lawyers in this room. You know, maybe the word vesting that we used was not the right terminology. We, we believed that rules would not be changed under the development agreement as long as the development agreement was in force, and we used the word vesting to convey that message to IHIFC. Is that the same vesting as is defined in the state's vesting doctrine? I don't think so. It was vesting to a contract that had a certain lifespan, and whether or not we were right in that interpretation or not, I, I think that's what all of this is about, and we're going to find out at some point. But I don't think, I don't think we were taking away vested rights as it's defined in state statute because of the development agreement.
So I, maybe I misunderstood, Mr. Niven, but I thought you concluded by saying the opposite of what you'd said earlier in your talk. I thought you said that your interpretation of vesting may not be the same as the state law interpretation of vesting. Did I misunderstand when you said that?
What I think I said was that the, the way that staff were using the term vesting in, as part of the development agreement is, is, I think, consistent with state statutes and intent of the, the vesting doctrine, but what we saw was, was consistent as long as the development agreement was in effect. And then when the development agreement was terminated and the replacement regulations were adopted, our belief was whatever was considered vested to that agreement expired with that agreement.
So your belief is that vested rights would not survive with the replacement regulations, correct?
My belief is the vesting to the development agreement did not survive the termination of the development agreement.
Okay, well, the development agreement was, were the only regulations that one could vest to in the Isaguá Highlands, correct?
Yes.
So for what period of time, then, did the development agreement apply to property owners such as my client in the Isaguá Highlands, but they couldn't vest because the city council could take away their vesting when the development agreement expired?
So the development agreement was clear that that couldn't happen until after September of 2017. So there was a timeframe from when the agreement was adopted in 1996 to 2017 that the surety and the predictability afforded to the property owner was solid.
So it's your opinion that between September and whenever the city council adopted the replacement regulations, property owners could not vest, correct?
So from the end of the build-out period in September of 2017 to the enactment of the replacement regulations in March of 18, you could still vest because the, because the development agreement was still in force after the build-out period because the replacement regulations had not been enacted.
But, Mr. Niven, you just told us the city council could take away those rights. So are you defining vested rights as rights the city council can take away whenever it enacts replacement regulations?
I believe that any rights given through a development agreement with a termination date can then be taken away after the termination date.
Okay, and so they're not vested rights if they can be taken away, correct?
Well, that gets back to my comment earlier that maybe I was using the word vesting differently than you use the word vesting.
When, when did you first publicly communicate your opinion that vested rights could be taken away by the city council when they enacted the replacement regulations?
I don't remember the date. It was, you know, we had conversation with the property owners that we were proposing vesting language in the replacement regulations, and that was, you know, that was with basically the first draft of the replacement regulations came with proposed vesting language that ultimately didn't survive the legislative process. It got changed.
Well, I'm not talking about the replacement, what the replacement regulations do or do not say, Mr. Niven. My question is, when did you first communicate, let's make it in writing, when did you first communicate in writing the opinion you're expressing to this commission that rights that vested to the development agreement would be taken away when the city council enacted the replacement regulations?
I don't know the date. I don't know when that was.
Did you express that in writing at any time before the replacement regulations were adopted?
Yes, because it was deliberated by the city council, the different alternatives to vesting, and it was made clear to them that under one alternative, it would impact permit applications that were in process.
Well, the alternative adopted by the city council provides for vesting pursuant to development agreements, correct?
It does.
And state law says that development agreements, one of their purposes is to provide for vesting, correct?
Correct.
So why would anyone who understood what vesting means under state law think that the adoption of replacement regulations that expressly say one can vest to a development agreement, why would anyone think that that meant you can't vest to this development agreement because the city interprets you as not being, interprets the agreement as something you can't vest to?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to respectfully object to that on multiple grounds. It's, obviously, it requests a legal conclusion. It's very sprawling and unclear, and it's not fair for the witness to expect him to answer that question of that type.
I certainly agree. It was a long and complicated question.
I agree.
That's because it's late, and I, this is going to go on for a long time, so it might be a good point to break, and I can ask a simpler, clearer question next time. But I, I expect I have at least another hour of cross-examination.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
For purposes of logistics, I would assume that we're going to have approximately an hour to an hour and a half of direct rebuttal testimony by Ms. Sloman, who will be our, the city's final rebuttal witness. So if that assists in the planning, that's an FYI for the commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I appreciate your consideration of maybe making your question a little simpler.
It was my worst question of the night, and so it was good time to stop.
I appreciate that, but, you know, given, given that we're very close to the hour that we reached agreement upon to adjourn, tonight's meeting will be continuing the public hearing on tonight's agenda to April 30. And I understand that all the commissioners are available on April 30, including Mr. Commissioner Morgan. We appreciate that change in schedule. Thank you very much. Do the party, and we've discussed a little bit the estimate of whether they will be able to wrap up all their witnesses on April 30, or whether we might need to schedule another meeting.
I, I think we need to schedule another meeting. We'll do our best to finish on the 30th, but I'm skeptical at the moment.
Does that include your presentation of rebuttal witnesses?
I, it, if we go for another hour with Mr. Niven, an hour and a half with Ms. Sloman, a comparable cross-examination, then we're into the next night. Because we will, we will have a couple of rebuttal witnesses.
Well, if additional dates are necessary to conclude the hearing, I understand that the parties would be able to meet next on May 7. Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Need kind of a, yeah, okay.
We can do it.
So that sounds great, and the public hearing on tonight's agenda will be continued to a special meeting of the commission on April 30. The council chamber is at 6:30. The meeting is now adjourned, so thank you.